Good evening, welcome to the planning board of, what's February 5th?
February 3rd.
I haven't gotten it right once today, I apologize. Phil, if you would do the roll call, please.
Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio?
Here.
Mr. Daniele?
Ms. Moran?
Here.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Here.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Here.
Ms. Choi, absent. Do you have a call?
So would you read the first petition?
Yeah, just I apologize. I thought I, I know I stuffed those envelopes, but I guess I mustn't have mailed out the packages. So well, I know there was a couple such as minutes that we'll just do at the following meeting. And just, just kind of as a reminder, since we haven't had a planning board meeting in a couple of weeks, for the petitioners as well as those watching, due to the kind of the COVID restrictions of these Zoom meetings, the item to be heard tonight will not be voted on. We'll hear from the petitioners and the planning board. Members will have an opportunity to ask questions. The item will then be continued to allow the general public to view the meeting and provide any comments. If we receive comments, those will be read into the record at the following meeting, which would be February 17th, and then a vote will be taken at that time. So under the agenda, under public hearings, liquor license, all alcoholic new, location 278 Main Street, Indian Orchard, petitioner Yad Food Bar and Grill 2, Inc.
You just muted yourself, Phil.
Right, did you hear me announce the item?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Who's here representing Yad Foods?
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Kimberly Campbell. And I'm here representing Yad Food.
Why don't you give us a little information about what you're planning, please?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the opportunity, first and foremost. So my name is Kimberly Campbell, and I currently work at Yad Food Jamaican Restaurant, which is located on 89 Main Street. And we are here this evening to propose our new location, which is located at 278 Main Street in Indian Orchard. And the name of this new location will be Hemil's Bar and Grill. So H-E-M-I-L apostrophe S, Bar and Grill. So I'm going to tell you a little bit of background about who we are. Myself and the owner, Orlando Roberts, he's also on this line. And so Orlando has been doing business in Indian Orchard for five plus years now. And he's been extremely successful. So, and so we operate currently the well-known Yad Food Jamaican Restaurant, which is down the street at 89 Main Street, right here in Indian Orchard. And I am the manager there. I've been managing Yad Food for about two years now. I have a number of leadership and management experience, including roles in human resources. And I am also very involved with the community in many ways. So I've created programs to improve wellness in people's lives. I enjoy to be a positive impact by assisting in helping people develop professional relationships so they can build within their communities. So that's something that I'm very passionate about and I enjoy doing. And I love people, I love working with people, I love bridging connections and sharing resources. So our plan here at Hemil's Bar and Grill is to bring America's favorite foods and sides to Indian Orchard. So we're offered dine-in, takeout, of course, delivery. And we'll have different items on our menu, such as burgers, seafood, soups. Of course, kids menus will have beverages, salads, and wings. So we're going to bring all of these things to our menu. We'll also have daily specials that will rotate. And what is our plan? Our plan is to create a safe, healthy environment. Number one, safety is our number one concern, and the health of our clients and the people that work here is certainly a priority. We want to establish a family-friendly environment. We'll also, our plan is to have live entertainment, so singing, dancing, and things of those natures. We also would like to offer, we have pool tables here, so we want to have pool, chino. And we do have a full sports bar set up. And so why we're here is because we need a liquor license in order to, you know, operate at the capacity that we want to operate at. And so we need the license to be able to legally serve alcohol to the patients in our establishment. And of course, the sale of the liquor would make a significant impact on the business. And it will also make our, our location more attractive to the patients. And they're used to that type of liquor being in here because this formerly Abika is well-known for its bar and all of the other amenities that it has. So, you know, having a liquor license would, you know, obviously be more, it would make it look better to the community as to what we can have. And we want to be able to have different types of events. So we can host things like birthday parties, pay-in sits, different fundraisers, even meetings for different businesses or in services. So there's a number of different things that we can do right here in this space and have it serve as a multi-purpose functioning for all of those different type of events that I listed and more. The type of impact in the community that we want to create is we also want to be able to create jobs for the people in Indian Orchard and the surrounding areas. So definitely we'll be able to offer opportunities in that realm. It'll give the people in Indian Orchard also a place of entertainment. If you're from the area, there's really not a lot going on in Indian Orchard. And then also, it's going to bring in more money to the community. So that, like I said earlier before, this location formerly known as Abika Bar and Grill has been serving Indian Orchard for over 10-plus years. So they're a well-known staple in the community. Prior to that, it was Christie's Lounge, which is also known for their good food and drink and their entertainment. So, but we here at Helen's Bar and Grill are dedicated to keeping the Indian Orchard alive by keeping this location open and serving our neighborhood. So we look forward to bringing a new energy, new vibes to this location. And with the success of our business down the street at Yad Food, we know that we'll have a lot of success here at this location. And again, you know, safety and health is our number one priority while we're operating this business. So we're taking the steps that we need to take in order for us to obtain this liquor license. So this is why we're here today.
Okay, have you been to the Indian Orchard Neighborhood Council?
We had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago.
And what was their opinion?
They voted yes.
Okay. And it's, you're going to be open from 8:00 AM until 2:00 AM?
That is the plan.
All right, Monday through Sunday?
Yes, ma'am.
Peter?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you for attending.
Sure.
Um, what is the, what, what are the liquor, liquor hours on Sunday for a restaurant bar?
11 or 10, if you're doing a brunch, not a.
And what time do they close?
I think they can close at 2:00, if they want.
Oh, okay, it is that late, all right.
I believe so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do any of the council, board members have any questions?
I know it's Rosemary, and I know the recommendation was until 12:00 instead of 2:00, until they sort of got a feel for, you know, the, you know, the restaurant how it was doing. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, ideally, we would like to open until 2:00 o'clock, you know, that would certainly allow us more opportunity to capitalize on the sales and to capture a different market. We would love to operate until 2:00 AM.
I have a question for Peter. Peter, I know Somar's Bar and Restaurant is right down the street. Do you know what their hours are? Are they open till 2:00?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm looking at the floor plan. And I'm, you said that you would have music, or entertainment, I should say.
Yes.
Okay, you know, apologize. You know you need an entertainment license.
We are aware.
Okay. And where would you?
And we actually have it, just an FYI.
Okay, you have it already?
Yes.
Okay.
What type of entertainment?
Um, so we have live DJs, we want to bring in different bands. And we might want to have entertainment like poetry night or open mic night. So giving an opportunity for people to showcase their talent that they have.
Okay, where would that take place? Oh, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, that's fine. Go ahead, Gloria.
Thank you. Where would it take place?
I'm actually here now at the establishment, so there's that open space right here. Space for the DJ, there is a dance floor, there is plenty of seating. We have this side, and we also have another VIP section over there. We have this entire bar where people can sit at. So there's actually plenty of space in here for people to, you know, be in, be in the capacity of the space safely. And for us to be able to host those type of events.
And I see that there's an outside deck. Are you going to be having tables out there? Are you going to be serving out there?
No, that's not the plan.
Okay.
I was just trying to look to see how close residents were, whether the live music was going to have any effect on the immediate neighbors. Because it's right in the middle of a residential area, from what I'm seeing. There's a lot of apartment buildings that are right around it. Have you been having music up till now?
They have been having music, yep.
Have either one of you managed a bar, bar, not just a restaurant? But has either one of you managed someplace with a liquor license?
I haven't, but I've definitely worked at bars before. I have worked at Applebee's on Boston Road. I've even done fine dining at what was formerly Cafe Lebanon, which is now Nadine's Fine Dining. So I've been in a capacity as far as serving liquor and been in that restaurant-type setting.
But nobody's managed a place with it, okay.
Who, who was going to be the manager of record? You, Kimberly?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you done tips training?
I have.
Okay, and who else will be in, in? Who's the bartender or the waitresses?
So we actually don't, we don't have any staff right now, but definitely everybody who's going to be here, they're going to be well-trained and well-certified.
Okay, and when do you hope to open?
Well, this is a process. As soon as we can, you know, get the proper paperwork in place, we want to be able to open up as soon as possible.
Okay.
The question in terms of you're looking to stay open till 2:00, what time would you be serving food up until, until you close?
Until we close, that would be ideal. That would be great for the business, you know, to be able to, you know, offer food while people are consuming liquor.
And getting back to the question where the, the recommendation from the planning department was to initially see how things go, you know, by closing at 12:00 o'clock. If that was the case, would that work for you?
It would work for us. Ideally, we, like I said, we would like to stay open until 2:00. Now, the plan is not to open every day until 2:00, but we would certainly like the opportunity for certain days for us to have the, you know, the place open till 2:00 AM.
I guess I, my, my recommendation, you know, I guess I would defer to the neighborhood as well. I'm not sure if that came up at the meeting, but if the neighborhood doesn't object to the hours, I'm certainly willing to, you know, again, what I try and be is consistent on how we look at new restaurants. This has been a bar in the past, so I guess I would defer to the, whether or not that was something that came up during the neighborhood council meeting.
Has, has the previous bar, did they have music?
Yes, they did.
They did?
Yes.
And Peter, the previous bar that was there, were they open until 2:00 AM?
Yes.
And you have to have complaints, I mean.
I think my only real big concern is being first time managing a place where you're responsible for the liquor. You know, going to, it's not that I have an issue with the big two. But I guess I'm, I'm just a little concerned with pushing the limit to that without any experience.
Yeah, for sure. I can, I can definitely understand, you know, where you're coming from, Rosemary. But we can assure you that we're going to be running this place as a very tight-knit place. We actually don't have any room for any type of foolishness. So, you know, if need be, we will definitely have, you know, making sure everybody is safe here because that's our number one concern and our, you know, for the people in here and certainly for us working here, you know.
Do you have any kind of security plan that we can look at or see?
Yeah, we actually definitely have staff who we plan on being here for security. That's for sure, you know.
Well, I, I mean, not just, you're telling us you're going to have staff that's going to be there for security, but you have an actual plan?
Unmute. Orlando is actually going to chime in on this.
Okay.
So our plan is if we do have an event that's going to be going until 2:00 AM, we would definitely hire the police to be here. So we definitely plan on working with Springfield Police Department if we're doing any events until 2:00 AM, just to avoid any problems going forward.
Okay. Peter, do they have to present a security plan to the license commission?
If they have a late-night entertainment license, I believe that's required.
Okay, and is that what you have?
I would like to see something like a plan, plan, not just that we're going to do this or whatever, but, you know, just sort of an organized, thought-out plan.
Sure. That's something that we can definitely get together and we can compose some, a security plan.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Leo, did you have a question that you asked me?
I'm sorry, say that again, Peter?
I thought Leo asked me a question and.
Um, I can't remember what. I think it was about the previous business and whether or not they had entertainment or music.
Oh, they did, they did, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And when, when you met with the neighborhood council, did you, was that part of your presentation that you did plan on or you were hoping to stay open till 2:00? And was there, was their response okay with that?
At that meeting, we actually didn't, there was no questions about the 2:00 AM conversation.
Okay.
We did express to them that we were planning to open up late night, though, definitely.
Bill, did we get anything from the neighborhood council?
I, I didn't. I didn't receive anything that I'm aware of.
We can actually forward over, we can forward some information over to you right now.
Okay.
Okay, do any of the counselors have, board members, excuse me, have any questions? Okay, so we're going to see each other again in two weeks. So if we can have the security plan, and if you could talk to the Indian Orchard Civic Association about some type of a document from them, that would be appreciated.
Sure.
At the 2:00 P, 2:00 AM instead of 12:00 AM?
And they're aware of the music as well. Just, they usually do a letter.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so if there are no other questions, I will, unless you have something else you would like to tell us, excuse me. I don't mean to cut you off, Kimberly, if you had something.
No, I don't. I'm, I'm here for questions, concerns, comments. I'm here for it all.
I did just get the letter from Mr. Roberts, if you want me to read that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
It just says, Indian Orchard Citizens Council, dated January 14th, 2021, to whom it may concern, Mr. Orlando Roberts and Kimberly Campbell, presented to the Indian Orchard Citizens Council on January 13th, 2021, at our monthly meeting, they presented their plans for the old Abika Bar and Grill. They are proposing a new nickname, Hemil's Bar and Grill, with plans to have working bar and grill with potentially more activities for the community participating in. They were requesting a liquor license to operate this new business in Indian Orchard. The council voted on the matter, and we are in support of Mr. Roberts' proposal and request for a liquor license. If you have any questions, please call. And it's signed, Zeta Goldman, the president of Indian Orchard.
All right, thank you. Okay, so hearing, no other, Leo, go ahead.
Gloria, one for Peter. I know when I was starting to ask him, were there any complaints or any problems with the previous business, you know, with the residents that were there, seeing that they did have music or they had entertainment and were open till 2:00 o'clock? So I was wondering, you know, if there were any kind of issues prior to this.
Well, since you're asking, yes, there were, there were many issues with Abika, and I'm very glad to see them gone, actually, and seeing a new management coming in and taking over this place because they just didn't seem to have a control over late-night people walking in there and causing problems. And they would, we would have them come in for hearings on, I mean, we had gunshots in the parking lot, and we had fights, and, and they would just kind of shrug their shoulder and say, we're not sure what to do. And we're like, well, you got to figure this out because if you can't, we will, and that's not going to go well for you. And I guess we didn't hear from them, and I guess they just chose not to renew this year, which is why. So Kimberly, you are leasing the premises from them, is that right? You're not buying it?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, she's leasing it.
Okay, so I'm hope, I'm crossing my fingers and hoping you're very successful there and the problems are gone because the neighborhood, I am very surprised that the neighborhood didn't have a whole lot of questions for you over what you were going to do there because they were not happy with the previous owners. And they were nice guys, and they just, yeah, I was, you know, they weren't, they didn't come in and, you know, wise off, and they just seemed to be hopeless or helpless about what to do there. And I'm hoping you have more control than they did.
I think that, that also ties in with a good, strong security plan, with cameras and who's responsible, and it sounds like they did not have that, which is why I'm asking.
Well, I, I'm just chiming in. This is Orlando Roberts. So we actually do have cameras right now. I'm sitting in the office. Let me see if I can turn this around. So there's cameras of the inside and outside. And moving forward, we actually do plan on buying this building from Lewis and Lucas. So in, in the next few months, after actually the transfer and everything goes well, we're, we are actually going to be finishing up, closing on our deal that we're working on. Yeah, so we're leasing, a moment, but we're looking, we're leasing with the hoping, with the hopes to buy soon.
I would just like.
Now we have an idea why I'm asking about a security plan, obviously, if they had issues, so they weren't managing.
And I wasn't aware of that. I didn't realize they've, they've had previous issues with, well, pretty much violence outside and inside. So that's good that you brought that up. So going forward, we'll definitely be on top of even more. You know, we will make sure that nothing like that happens here because we're, we're looking for actually an older crowd to, you know, for, for our patrons. We're now looking to entertain the younger people that's causing a lot of the problems in the neighborhood, you know. So, and like one of the events that we already kind of have promoted at Once to Work is like Jazz Nights. We're looking at, you know, kind of just bring some type of entertainment to the, the area once it, we were allowed to, you know, COVID's kind of put a lot of restrictions on, on everything right now. But once the restriction is somewhat lifted, we plan on, you know, entertaining for the, the older crowd, if that makes any sense to you.
Okay, I would like to reiterate what Peter said about the, the noise. And he knows from my experience with him, I lived in a neighborhood where there was constant noise from a bar. And I mean, 2:00 in the morning as they were leaving, shouting, yelling, shooting. Someone was killed, and so at night, sound travel. So I can't emphasize enough to you to really be tight on that because it's, it's a kiss of death, no pun intended, there was anything that happens. But you really got to keep it tight because when they leave, people have no regard for who's around them.
No, I, I, go ahead.
Well, I have another question. I, my phone went off, but anyway, I see that there are only six parking spaces. Is, are there more?
Well, on the physical property, there's only six spaces in the back of the lot. There is plenty of parking spaces in front of the building and up and down the side streets. But for the, for the most part, it's only six park, parking lot, parking spaces in the parking lot.
Does that fly, Phil?
I, I mean, this is, this is considered a pre-existing use, so there's, so, so the parking requirements wouldn't, wouldn't be triggered here.
Okay.
Yeah, occupancy is 75, it seems, yeah.
But I'm.
There is, there is a good amount of on-street parking right around that area, so.
Yeah, most, yeah. Leo, go ahead.
Gloria, and again, just to state again that for the next meeting, if they could bring a letter from the neighborhood council, but I'd like to see in that letter where it says that they're aware of a 2:00 o'clock closing.
Okay.
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 All right. All right, if there are no other questions or concerns, I will accept a motion to continue this meeting until two weeks.
Vote to continue the meeting.
Second. Thank you. Phil, if you would do roll call.
On a vote to continue the meeting, Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi is absent, so this item will be brought back to the board on February 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
Take care.
Phil, if you would do the next.
Yeah, so just under all other matters, I, I think I sent you a copy. I didn't, I wasn't going to mail this out because it's rather large. Thanks to the CPA, we have another single building district, so this is, yeah, yeah, that's great. So this is literally just an informational package that is given to the board. It needs to be submitted to the planning board in order to start the timing. There's really not a vote required. It's just kind of a packet that is submitted to the planning board on a new historic district. So that's been submitted to you, so we'll, yes, Peter, we're done with you, so you're all set. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Peter. Night, Peter.
So on that one, I, I think, you know, again, I, you have copies of it, so we can, I don't know if there's any questions. Again, it's, it's, when, when projects are, this is, this is the old Brookings School that is being redeveloped for housing. It received CPA funding, so as part of their approval for CPA funding, they're requiring these projects to become local historic districts, so.
Because it's under historical funding.
Right, so, so anyway, before I get to the A and R plans, there's just one item I needed you guys to vote on. Leo may be aware of this, but the, the city is currently looking to put the old Gemini site out to bid for redevelopment, and currently the property's owned industrial A. The chief development officer, Tim Sheen, would like to petition to have that rezoned to allow for housing. And again, we're going to, right now, we're going to propose that it go to B1, which gives a little flexibility in how it's, it's developed. Residents, B1 is actually a district that was created back in 2013. It is not, has not been implemented, implemented in the city. This will be the first time it is. It's a, it's a zoning district that basically mimics the Mattoon Street. It would kind of mimic all. It would kind of mimic also what's across the street from the old Gemini site, um, on Central Street now, so. Um, again, well, I'm a little concerned that B, B one's a good zone, but it may not fit all. We're, we're gonna have to take a look at what the development project comes in for, who's gonna apply and what they're proposing to see if it's a, a, a real good fit, but uh, Tim is concerned that we, that we rezone it from industrial A, which currently doesn't allow housing. Industrial A would not allow housing um, to do it. So again, this would just be a, a, a vote to allow the planning board to move forward with the petition. Would still need to be legally advertised and brought back to the planning board at a full hearing, so. Um, this is, we've kinda done this a couple times in the past where I'll, I'll get your signatures, but, um, I don't know if anybody's got any questions.
So we're talking about potential of like row housing, like they did across the street.
Right, I think that's, that's kind of the goal to try. And, and B one allows you to do smaller individual lots, which would help to promote homeownership versus rental, which is what we're hoping to get.
Yeah, that, that's what I heard, Phil, was one of the developers was talking about, um, individual houses, um, owner-occupied hu-houses. So B one is that, that would cover that?
Yeah, and you could do, you could do a townhouse-style development, um. B one allows for individual parcels that have a look, the, I think the lot size is only twenty-five hundred square feet, so. Again, Gemini is a little odd lot, cause you don't have, it's not a hundred feet wide, so you're gonna have to fiddle with the size of the lots. You know, I, obviously parking's gonna play a role and we're all this new housing where people are gonna park, so it, I'm really kinda curious to see what comes in for the request for proposals and what type of development ultimately we're gonna have.
Um, and. There, there's no parking for across the street, is there, except on street?
I, I think so. I think there's a little in the back, but not much.
Is there a little in the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, those were obviously built years ago, probably long before, so.
Right.
You know, the same with Mattoon, there's, you know, you got on-street parking for Mattoon Street and, and that's it.
And just the alley in the back, yeah.
So. Um, so again, what, what, what Tim has asked me to do is ask the board to petition for a B one. Um, which, again, we'll have to see whether that, there may be, you know, at the end of the day, we'll let, we may have to come back and look at what the development proposals are, but this will get the ball rolling.
Leo, how do you feel about that?
Um. Because I, I would have liked to have seen some of the proposals that were coming in first.
I mean, I certainly, I mean, uh, if, if you guys wanna hold off, I, I, Leo, I, I tend to agree. That was my first response to Mr. Sheen, that, you know, why don't we wait to see what comes in, to see what ultimately fits? You know, if that's your concern, I'm more than welcome to take that to Tim tomorrow and, and we can, I can bring this back on the seventeenth and, and see what he says. I cause I, again, I don't, until, it, it's kinda hard to pick a zone until we know exactly what they're proposing to do, so.
Yeah, it's like the heart before the horse.
Yeah, the two different developers that have initially made some contact with me are talking two totally different types of projects.
Yeah.
So, so.
All right, well, let me, let me, let me, let me just do this. Well, I'll, I'll hold off on this vote and we'll, I'll, I'll.
It says the bids open till the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, so.
Not far.
So I, I don't think, I, I don't think it's a huge rush, but he had asked me to do this, so I, I will, I'll have a chat with him tomorrow and I'll, and I'll come back on the seventeenth and we can talk about it.
So we can't, we, we don't. I'm just thinking about, is there an issue if we vote on it later, once we look at some of the plans? Will somebody come back and say, hey, you voted against the change or you are for the change after you saw my plans?
I don't think so, cause it just says in here they've initiated a zone change to B one, so right now it's still.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's what he, he has indicated that we're gonna, we were gonna initiate, but I don't think it's, I don't think that's locked in.
Okay.
Do you wanna vote from the, the board if, if it so goes that way, that, uh, we feel we should hold off?
Well, let's wait till the seventeenth. I, I don't think, I'll, I'll have a chat with him tomorrow and, and bring your, bring the concerns of the board to him and, and and I'll see what, where he wants to go with it.
All right, yeah, cause it seems like we could put in this, put this in place and then have to come back and back out of it, and that doesn't make sense.
Or, or you may need a, a number of variances depending on.
Right.
Propose, so. So I'll just, I'll just hold off on this and we'll come back.
All right.
Quickly, let me just, let me just go through. I, I've got a number of, uh, and then I'll let you guys go. I got a number of A and R plans. I'm just gonna bring up here real quick. You guys can let me know if you see that.
Yes.
Yeah.
So this is New Hall Street. If you can see the circle, this is, there's a, there's currently a lot here. I can, I can highlight it if you need to. Basically, there, the, the, this lot is city-owned. They're buying this lot through, I think, in a Butters auction and combining these two. There's also a little parcel here that, that uh, fronts on Berkshire Avenue that they're combining. So it's, so it's one lot, it's, it's actually three lots being, being, um, incorporated into one.
Okay.
Second.
If you just wanna do a, a roll, I mean, a, a voice vote, that's fine. I think we can.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oced, abstention, okay.
So the next one is Andrew Street. Again, this is another city-owned property here. Uh, it's a, it's a small little lot that, that, uh, fronts on Hayden Avenue. This, this purchase, again, this, this house is buying it through the Butters auction and as part of that process, we'll remove that lot line and make it one parcel.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, nays, okay.
So this is kind of a funky one. If I can do this real quick, this is the current parcel. Not the best draw here, but. So that's, that's the current parcel. What they're doing is creating this new lot, which has the required frontage, and then this would be the remaining parcel. It's still gonna have that kinda funky little square over here, but, but basically they're gonna create a new building lot here. And the house would remain on a, on a, uh, on a, on the existing parcel, so.
So is that one that's remade, the one that they're, they're pulling off? Is that gonna be attached to that little square?
Yes, you can see it kinda goes.
Oh.
Cause right now, the, the whole parcel is attached to that little square, so this, this guy's getting this, but this one, this new parcel will now get.
And they get this little walkway thing over to the square?
Yeah, I don't know.
That's weird.
Yeah, but it, you know, the, the, the lot being created and the, and the lot where the houses both meet the zoning, so.
Okay, move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays, okay, that's it.
Um. So again, this is, this is a little. They're actually doing a couple things on this lot. There's actually two separate parcels here. Um, I guess the, this is a family that owns these parcels and the sister is going to give this gentleman here five feet, cause that's where his driveway is. So, so they'll, so this little, this little area will now become part of this parcel. And then there's a, currently, there's a lot line down the middle here that, that actually cuts through the house that they're getting rid of is now, uh, uh, as well, so this will become one parcel and this new lot will have this little jog, which will allow the driveway to be on their property.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, this is just on the corner of, of Parker and Casbeck Street. Again, this is currently one lot and they're going to cut off a building lot. And again, it's, it's, they, they meet the seventy-five by a hundred uh, requirement, so, um, they're able to, to cut off the, we're up there a lot to create a new building lot, so.
Is that a building that's on it? What's that little square?
It looks like, I think it's, it, it's either a pool or a garage. But that, that'll be taken out and, and this will just become a building lot.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
So we do have, we do have a number of other liquor license coming up on the seventeenth, so other than that, I have nothing further, so. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
They're moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, see you in two weeks, everyone. Stay safe.
Have a nice night. Take care.
Have a good night.
Hey, Leo, what you got going?